Good evening, everyone. We would like to call our Monday, January 9 Fayetteville City Council meeting to order. Welcome all of you all who are joining us in person. Those who join us remote. At this time, we will have our invocation. Ask that you please stand. Ask Pastor Jeff Sprangler of the Church of the Nazarene if he would come and render the invocation. Immediately following, if we could please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in unison. Well, luckily, we have a number of pastors on the dais tonight, so Reverend DJ Harry, do you mind giving us the honors?
No problem at all, Mayor. Thank you. Dear Lord, we, first, we want to say thank you once again, Father, for just taking care of us, for just taking care of our city, our communities. We thank you, Father, also for answering the country, the world's prayers for Damar Hamlet. We thank you for that also, Father. As we move forward tonight and as we dig into the city of Fayetteville's agenda, Father, let our minds be open to hear one another, to hear the citizens, also, Father, with the public forum, and just give us the mind to be open and to hear and to make corrections where we need to do that. And we just thank you, Father, for each council member that's around the diocese and all the folk that are with us, the citizens that are in the room with us tonight. We ask you to bless them and bless us. Bless our city. Help us to make it better as we move forward in 2023. In these things, I ask, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, one God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember here. At this time, we'll move to, and I think we're joined by, found by Councilmember Ingram. You there?
I'm there.
All right, thank you. All right, council, we will move to announcements. Don't have any listed.
Mr. Mayor, let me make an announcement.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was talking to an individual who was going through some changes, and I just wanted to be a small PSA that mental health and suicide is prevalent amongst us. All during the holidays, everybody's seen all these kind acts. Well, we just don't need them during the holiday. We need them during the entire year. There are some people out there that have anxiety, that have depression, that have helplessness and hopelessness and feels like they just can't go on. But I want them to know that there's help out there. They can call 588. They can call a family, a friend, a pastor, a council member, anybody out there who can give them some help. When Twitch died, it sent shockwaves through a lot of neat news media because depression and anxiety doesn't have a face on it. So you never know where it's coming from. But I remember a small thing that Tyler Perry said. He said that if he'd acted on some of his emotions, he would have never seen the glory that God had bestowed upon him. So I just want everybody to know that. Hope, help, and happiness is just a phone call away. And if he can do it for him, he can do it for you. If he did it before, he can do it again. God bless you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. At this time, council, under the announcements, I will remind everyone that the Martin Luther King Prep Breakfast will take place on Monday, January 16, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. at the Crown Expo Center. So if you're available, please see the Fayetteville Cumberland County Ministerial Council regarding that. Item, any other announcements, council? All right, moving on to City Manager's report, Mr. Hewitt. Unlisted. All right, council, moving on. Item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Can we, we'll try our iPads tonight and see how that works. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
May I have an iPad? Will this be appropriate time to amend the consent agenda?
Sure, you can. Oh, well, typically, it's during consent if it's one of those items. I'll come back to you. All right, council, look to you for your, a motion to approve the agenda?
I did already.
All right, so it looks like we are back to hands. So Councilmember Honduras, there's a second. Councilmember McNair, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, those in favor, show of hands.
The iPad's not working.
It's not. All right, item clerk, it's unanimous. Item 7.0, Councilmember Benevente.
Yes, Mayor Colvin. If I can ask that we remove item 7.06.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. All right, Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I ask that we move item 7.06 from the consent agenda and table that to our next city council meeting.
All right, is that a motion to approve with the exception of 7.06, or is there other amendments to that section?
I would like to pull item 7.04, just to give the citizens an opportunity to know what it is.
All right, it's up or down vote for 7.04. Anything else? I think Councilmember McNair had something.
Thank you, Mayor. If we can pull 7.02.
All right.
For up and down vote.
All right, up and down vote for 02. All right, anything else on the consent? So Councilmember Benevente, if you could, your motion would be to approve with the exception of 7.02, 04, and then the table 7.06 to the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, it's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Benevente to approve consent with the exception of 7.02, 04, and the table 7.06 to the next meeting. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember McNair. All right, discussion on the motion? Discussion, Councilmember Dawkins. Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for the city attorney. Is there a timing issue on 7.06 we need to be mindful of?
I do think there, I do think there's a timing issue, but I don't have it and think that we would be able to accommodate moving this request to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, Councilmember Ingram.
May I understand the reason to move 7.06 to the next meeting?
Yes. Do you have an opportunity for all council members to be present to discuss that particular item in person?
Thank you.
All right, council, we vote on our iPads. This is to approve. Two for your votes.
I'll have to raise my hand, Mayor.
You're good. All right, council, those in favor, show of hands. All right, Councilmember Ingram. All right, motion carries. Item 7.02, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we take this up and down vote, I did want to mention that I do support development and as it relates to family residential. However, off Cliffdale, there has been numerous accidents, and Bone Creek subdivision have been having issues for the last few years as far as exiting from the Town Creek Street onto Cliffdale Road. So for that reason, I am not going to support it until we find out what the NCD DOT are going to do as far as traffic.
Thank you. And I, thank you, Councilmember. Were you finished?
No, I was going to go ahead and make.
I did have a question before you do that. I'll circle back to you. All right, Mr. Manager or Mr. Harmon, Cliffdale has been a topic of conversations. We did a study. We reduced speed limits, and we've done some traffic comment, increased enforcement. What is the plan to address traffic concerns? Was it one submitted, Mr. Harmon or Mr. Manager?
I don't believe that there are any DOT projects for Cliffdale. Not that I can recall. So I'm not sure that there is anything right at the moment that the state is looking to do in that area.
Well, I've been having conversations with Drew Cox, one of the engineers for NCDOT, because I know a few times I've sent emails out regarding residents not being able to, well, having problems turning on to Cliffdale Road. But from my understanding and from conversations, the NCDOT supposed to have conversations and have a meeting with Lee Jernigan to discuss some options. But as of right now, they are not eligible to receive a signal light coming out of that subdivision. So that's the reason I won't be supporting it because they're already struggling with coming out of the neighborhood. We have this apartment back there and I don't know how many homes back there in that area, but they've been having issues for the last several years. So I won't be able to support that knowing, knowing for that reason.
All right, so Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, I'll, did you have your light on for a motion, Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Just as a point of clarification, tonight, this is a consent item. So if it does not get approved as a consent item, it has to be pulled for a public hearing at a later council meeting.
I think it's probably a good idea, anyway, in my opinion. All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
I make a motion to not approve, let me go back, the rezoning for the single-family residential to mixed residential.
All right, is a motion to deny item 7.02 for the rezoning. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, question phase coming. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Councilmember McNair. All right, discussion phase. Councilmember here.
Councilwoman, were you meaning to, to vote it down, or were you meaning to turn it into a public hearing so that the citizens could come and also have an opportunity to speak?
Oh, mine was to vote it, vote it down.
Vote it down?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon, quick question on that. So council has a rule about things that are a vote and fail. Well, tell me about what you were just saying in reference.
Unless the, our attorney corrects me on this.
Does specific action have to be given in this motion for it to come back for a public hearing, or is this an up and down vote and it goes?
The only two things that can happen tonight are either a vote in favor or it pulled for a public hearing at a later date.
Right. But right now, the motion on the floor is to deny, which would not automatically set it up for a public hearing.
Correct.
It would deny it.
Well, then, Mayor, I withdraw, I withdraw my motion.
All right.
And I'll just go for up and.
All right, so is there, so is there a motion to set it for a public hearing?
Mayor Colvin, I move that we set this item for a public hearing since we do not have consensus tonight.
All right, council, all right, it's motion by Councilmember Benevente to set item 7.02 for a public hearing, seconded by Councilmember here. Any discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Show of hands. Look like the iPads are, okay, well, they may want to cooperate tonight. All right.
Mayor, with that action, we will bring this to you as soon as we can.
Well, let's see the outcome of the vote first.
What you, it.
She's got it on iPad, so we'll see. All right, Jim? All right, so let's just, let's just go, let's just go by hands tonight, guys. All right, Councilmember Ingram, your pleasure. All right, we're voting, y'all. Those in favor of the motion, the hair, McNair, Banks McGlaughlin. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Those voting. All right, Mr. Manager, what were you saying?
And I was going to say, at that meeting, can we have Lee Jernigan present to answer a question?
Yes, ma'am. We will also follow up with him and NCDOT anticipating those questions.
Okay, thank you.
But I guess, Mayor, we'll bring that to you as soon as we can get it published and noticed.
Sounds good. All right, item 7.04, Councilmember here, that's your item.
Thank you, Mayor. Who can make a little short presentation on this item? I know it's, it's for, it is for water and sanitation sewer project that's going to be located in Catalyst Site One. Just kind of explain what it is because whenever work starts going on, those of us that support the corridor or represent the corridor will get the calls.
As I understand it, along Brunner Street, there is a relocation being done of the underground pipes. This is actually, council already granted an easement, probably about nine months ago. I don't have the memo in front of me for the exact date. But they granted an easement, and as work has, as the planning has gone forward, PWC has realized that they need about 15 feet extra because there is a pole. That all of this is going to be along the right of way for the railroad also. And to avoid having to move this pole, if they can extend the pipe, the easement that they originally have received from the city, then they won't have to relocate the pole and everything can be done underground.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, you had a question?
Yes, and that was for 703, right, with the easements?
It was 7, 7.04.
Oh, I'm sorry.
03 is passed.
Oh, I mean, that's what, I'm sorry. Was it 703 or 704?
04. 03 is passed.
Okay, never mind.
So, Mayor, I'll move that we approve item 704.
All right, motion by Councilmember here to approve 7.04, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Ingram. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. All right, item 7.06, Councilmember, no, he pulled that already. All right, moving on to the public forum. This is a time, the public forum is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individual speakers wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda in the public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments till the public hearing. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, shall refrain from any personal attacks. Those seated in the audience, we ask that you please remain from clapping, yelling, or audio expressions of approval or disapproval of comments made during the forum. Failure to abide by these rules may subject the offender to be removed from the council chambers. So when your name is called by the city clerk, ask that you please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. Then, when you're notified, your time will begin. At 30 seconds remaining, you'll be notified. At the end of your expired time, you'll be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time or engage in dialogue with the speakers. With that being said, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, ma'am. We have 10, sorry, nine speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Ann Schrader.
Good evening, Ms. Schrader.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin. My name's Ann Schrader, and I live in Fayetteville, and I am the founder and owner of Eco Solutions, a local sustainability consultancy that is helping to create a healthier and more resilient community, environment, and economy. And I'm here in this new year to again call for the update to our city of Fayetteville's 2009 Sustainability Master Plan. And why is this so important? Because not only are the challenges of our environmental and climate crisis real and backed by science, but these record-breaking impacts and extreme weather events have already become the ongoing reality for not only the citizens of our community, but the citizens of our state and our nation and the rest of the world. And as these environmental and climate crises continue to contribute to resource availabilities, supply chain disruptions, price fluctuations, and a growing migration population, our city of Fayetteville has a distinct opportunity to benefit and lead by example with the current sustainability plan for reducing and preparing for the impacts of these human and environmental health challenges for Fayetteville's current and future generations. And if further inspiration is required, we can look to the following as example. In 2016, nearly every nation on earth signed the Paris Climate Agreement. And in 2020, our own state of North Carolina released its own state climate risk assessment and resilience plan. And in 2022, our federal government enacted the Inflation Reduction Act that includes the largest environmental, climate, and renewable energy laws in U.S. history. And last but not least, we can look to our own city of Fayetteville's Can Do Carolina mindset for inspiration, where we affirm, we find a way, we care for one another, we protect our world and our environment, and we always go further. And I'm happy to work together with this city council and our city services departments in helping to update and implement our city of Fayetteville's 2023 Sustainability Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Rick Ivansky.
Good evening, Mr. Ivansky.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I wanted to share with you this evening some interesting information that I found on the website of the Washington Post. The Washington Post has a long history of very good Pulitzer award-winning investigative journalism. This particular database is called Fatal Force. It was created in 2015 by the Washington Post after the death of Michael Brown, when they found in an investigation that almost a half of police killings were not reported to the FBI or the CDC. Now, I want to say that these are not required reporting by any police department that are, were listed in there. However, the FBI is trying to get a handle on that and encouraging police departments to, to report. And I do not know if Fayetteville is reporting. The way the Post gets this stuff, the Washington Post gets it, is from news releases or other sources, other media, if you will. So just some stats that I want to throw out very quickly. 1,097 people have been shot and killed by police, and these are police that are in the line of duty, not off duty, et cetera. These are in line of duty. In the past 12 months, if you look, the Post has tracked 8,102 fatal shootings since 2015. Now, the reporting has gotten even worse over the years. In 2021, the Washington Post had an article that said they were down to one-third under-reported on police killings across the nation. Now, I took some stats here, and they have risen in recent years to the point where the record number was in 2022. Black Americans are killed at a much higher rate than white Americans due to the rate that they're killed is at least 50% higher than, than others. African Americans and Native Americans and Hispanic Americans are also in that group. Also, most of the people shot and killed by police were between 20 and 40 years old. So very young, young people. Most of them were men. 95% were men. Within Fayetteville, I did a little bit of drilling down into the data, minded a little bit. And for Fayetteville, between 2015 and 2022, two people were reported for mental health issues. And those were done just last year. So over the whole five-year period, those two people were the only ones reported for that database. And Fayetteville Police Department is listed in there. So why am I bringing this to your attention? I want to keep mental health in front of you. I want you to see this is real. And when you call somebody to help you, do not call the Fayetteville Police unless you guys fix it. Fix it now. Thank you. Good evening.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff members, cities official. It's hard to follow. My name is Jose I. Cardona. I live at 233 Addison Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Today, I come before you to thank the Sheriff Department and the Fayetteville Police Department for the exemplary way that they did the celebration of life for a falling police officer or a falling deputy. They went out of their way, took care of everything. There was a lot of sadness and a lot of tears, but the ceremony completely was out of this world. He did not die in vain. And for them, I thank them. I would like to take a couple of seconds of my time to bow my head and pay respects. On the other hand, on the other news, I come to you that there are two, two marble slabs in front of the law enforcement center with the names of 32 fallen officers. Not 13 like didn't be reported, it's 32. This one will be number 33. These protectors of the people don't have a museum to tell their story. And yes, many are military police from the United States Army that cannot go in that museum downtown for whatever reason I do not understand. So the next person that comes up to you before you to ask money for another museum, please ask the question, what about our police? What about our fallen firemen? What about our fallen doctors? Our fallen EMS persons? And what about those heroes that actually get in front of that bullet to stop maybe something from happening or stopping something happening here in the mall or something anywhere else? Please reconsider because I hate to see any more people dying for no reason at all and not be recognized in this city. We need to do better than what we do a slab or two marble. Don't cut it. Not for me, anyway. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Savona Akins.
Good evening, Ms. Akins.
Good evening to everyone. It's a privilege.
It's a privilege to live to see another holiday. Hey, I struggled. I could have been dead, sleeping in my grave for Thanksgiving. But I told death, hell, and the grave to behave. Oh, yeah, I got power. I got doom of power, full of the Holy Ghost, and can slay a giant like David the Eagle lion. But I'm here to say to the mayor, to the citizens of Fayetteville, to the city council, it's time to come together and let's reason together and stop fighting against one another. I am not your threat. I am your sister in Christ. I am your sister. You are my sisters and brothers. Everybody is loving each other and pulling together on one accord. We need to be united. We stand for God. And divided, we fall amongst enemy. Because I'm not your problem. The enemy is. The enemy is making you think I'm your problem. I'm your solution to your problem, because I'm full of the Holy Ghost and trying to do a work for God to bring the whole nation together for God. It's time out for all this foolishness that we saw. And I could have been dead today, January 3rd. Okay. Enough licking, baby. Because homegirl, keep it on ticking. So it's time for all this mess and all this foolishness to cease. And try Jesus and try me. Trust me this time. No, I ain't committed no crime. No, I ain't stole nothing. I didn't steal then, and I ain't stealing now. And whatever God bless me with, I'm a good steward of it. And I got proof of it, because my life for 30 years add up to something, full of the Holy Ghost and doing a great work for God. And I'm on the wall like Jeremiah used to say. I'm on the wall, and I can't calm down. So if you got out with me, take it up with my big man, Peter. Because we need to pull together and be on one accord that's to the United States government and to the whole wide world and the citizens of Fayetteville. I am not your problem. I'm just a solution to your problem, full of the Holy Ghost and ready to do a work and slay a devil and a giant. And we need to pull together. God bless you tonight. Thank you.
Amen.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jelenko Hurst.
Hurst, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, the mayor. I have two subjects matters to cover today. And it struck me as I came around the corner this evening. My primary one is once again the homeless situation in Cumberland County in Fayetteville, North Carolina. We got people sleeping out in the cold right here on the steps. Right across the street at that $48 million atrocity that somehow got funded by taxpayers in Fayetteville. We got veterans and civilians sleeping on the steps. What makes this issue such an issue for those who pay attention? Because no matter what your religion, Buddhism, Christianity, or Islam, every one of those prophets, technically, by today's standards, was homeless. Muhammad was homeless. Jesus was homeless. Noah was homeless. And for individuals who have a job to protect the interests of all citizens of the city, when recently the council voted to start empowering law enforcement to give these citizens who have nowhere to go citation, in my view, was heartless. Present in this country, they call the United States, we have 1,267,21 college students homeless, the future of this country. And what really is bringing the issue and the numbers higher is that landlords, especially last year, were evicting people after the COVID restrictions were lifted all over the country. And they were no longer accepting the vouchers of these citizens who were in Section 8 housing or hood housing, any kind of funding, taxpayers. The landlords were flatly just refusing it, even though we had Judge Johnson, and I forget the other judge over there, trying to implore these landlords to have some sense of humanity. It fell on deaf ears. And lastly, let me close, since I have just 30 seconds, is that even though this is a military town, military needs to somewhat humble themselves. These citizens, whether it be schoolteachers, fire department, grocery baggers or whatever, they don't have the benefit of the VA loans. They don't have the benefit of no zero-down payments for these residents. So I implore the individuals who have the job of taking care of the citizens of Fayetteville to please, as you go out, as you leave City Hall today, look around you at these citizens sleeping outside and put yourself in their place. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening, Mr. McMillan. Sean McMillan, 624 Golden Rain Drive. We repeat what we don't repair. A little more than a year ago, on January 8th, 2022, Jason Walker was shot and killed. Jason Walker's armed assailant, Jeffrey Hash, exited his vehicle to shoot Jason. If you or I had shot someone in the streets of Fayetteville, we'd be arrested. We'd be tried. A jury of our peers would decide our guilt or innocence. In this case, an arrest never happened because Jeffrey Hash was an off-duty sheriff's deputy. And we all know that. He was shielded from prosecution first by responding officers at the scene of the crime, officers from the Fayetteville Police Department. He was allowed to skip every part of the process that us normal folks go through as a result. And he continues to be employed by Sheriff Ennis Wright in the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department. We repeat what we don't repair. Today, The Fayetteville Observer reported a lawsuit against this city because the man who killed 57-year-old Christine Harris, also a member of law enforcement community, was also never arrested. He's going over 90 miles per hour, killed Ms. Harris as she was turning in to a church parking lot. She was ejected and killed. There's not so much as a breathalyzer given to this special police officer who lives in Fayetteville. Again, we failed Ms. Harris, just as we failed Mr. Walker. We repeat what we don't repair. I'm an Army retiree, three-time combat veteran. In training, when people die in situations where they're not supposed to, we do something called a safety stand-down. We figure out what the problem is. We figure out what policies and procedures need to change so that it doesn't happen again. And everything stops until that happens. We treat it with that level of urgency. In this city, we've watched person after person be killed by police, and we have not raised up to the level of urgency that we need to. We repeat what we don't repair. And in this case, that repetition is causing the loss of life. We need to do more. Calling for the council to do three direct asks. The first is get this OCS up and running, Office of Community Safety. Second is get on this legislative calendar and get the CRB passed. It's long overdue. All right? The third is getting mental health response for mental health crisis and make that an urgent, urgent task.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Tatum Malloy.
Good evening, Ms. Malloy.
Many of you probably saw the debacle in Durham with ShotSpotter. We were able to find out a few more things that we did not find out in the forums, the performative forums that were held last year. One, we now know that ShotSpotter does not detect shots from within a home or a building. Two, ShotSpotter does not detect shots from a moving vehicle, along with the other things, problems that we pointed out from ShotSpotter. So now, not only do we know that this tool does not prevent gun violence, we know that the conditions for this tool to work is so precise that it waters down the effectiveness. The ask that I have tonight is that we, the community, receive a written desired outcome from you, the mayor, and those city council members that supported signing the contract, Thompson, Hare, Colvin, Dawkins, Jensen, and McNair. Publish this publicly so that we have something to measure the effectiveness. As I kept saying over and over again, you cannot declare if something is effective if you don't have a desired outcome that you're looking for. Next, we need to begin to see some actions in addressing community violence. This includes violence from our law enforcement officers, killing unarmed citizens, to include those suffering from mental health issues. So one, we just had a new police chief that was hired. What I'm asking is, I believe that the Fayetteville Police and I think the council, I'm not sure, went through the REI groundwater training, but that is not enough. That's only the first part. I've participated, and all of my duelists do this training. You cannot just do the groundwater. You need to also include Phase 1. Because black and brown people are being killed more than other citizens by our police officers. It is not effective to just only do part of the training. You have to push through and do all of the training. Also, as Sean mentioned, support an Office of Community Safety Board that will house our community mental health response team and independent oversight board for our Fayetteville Police Department and the unhoused. Councilmember Hare stated in his prayer earlier that you all may hear the things that are needed for our community and may you challenge yourselves to make corrections where you know we have the need. This is what we're asking of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy.
Our next speaker is Ms. Demetria Murphy.
Good evening, Ms. Murphy.
So greetings to Mayor Mitch, to all of the city council members, and to everyone present. So I'm standing before you today to address the significant need for support from all elected officials in our city. We say that we are the Can Do City, so we must stand on that notion. Violence is not an isolated issue just in underprivileged or demographically challenged areas. The Police Department released their numbers regarding where we are with homicides and violence in 2022, and those numbers were not decreasing. We are seeing an all-time high with gun violence, overdose, suicide, and mental health issues. Many organizations are doing the work in our community, but they need support. These events that these organizations are facilitating, they're very costly. People are not giving their venues to us for free, nor is anyone offering their service to us for free. Yes, I'm very clear and understand that there are grants available. However, more grant funding, resources, and privatized assistance is needed to address the work that the organizations are doing in the community. I'm not here to point the finger. I'm standing here to highlight what we need as smaller organizations in our community to be effective. We are slowly draining our other smaller organizations who survive off donations and grants, just as we do. We all want to live in a safe community, but it would take the help of all citizens, despite what your position or your titles are. It's going to take all of us to fight this war on violence. So support cannot be isolated to particular elected officials, small businesses, or individuals. We must stand together to make our community safer as the Can Do City that we say we are. January 21st, 2023, 116 Person Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina, Hilldville will be presenting our second annual Winter Wonderland Family Sneaker Ball. Our guest speaker is our own Dr. Kathy Waddell, retired principal. And Mr. Anthony Bryant, he is the founder of Split Second nonprofit from Lexington, South Carolina. There will be live entertainment, performance from our youth squad, Enchanted Roses dancers. We have an excellent menu selection and an elegant red carpet set up. Photos will be available. This is a family affair. This is a night to remember for a whole family. The doors open at 4:00 p.m., and the event starts at 4:30. I will be in the back of the room for anyone who is interested in donating or helping us sponsor this. I would be remiss not to thank those on council who have supported what I have been doing in the community for years to come. I live, eat, and breathe this. It's no way that you can wake up and not be impacted by every day we losing somebody to violence. We shouldn't have to know them to be affected. We should be affected because they belong to someone else. I say this and I'll continue to say it. Don't let violence strike your door before it become important. It should be important regardless.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Our final speaker is Ms. Maya Warren. I don't see her in the audience. Okay, we have no further speakers, Ma.
All right, thank you. And thank you to all of our speakers tonight. Item 9.0 is public hearing. Public hearings, individuals desiring individuals desiring to speak at the public hearings must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 p.m. this evening. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire time. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record and then address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And at the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And with that, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is Case P-22-45. The owner and applicant is Joseph Gillis. The request for tonight is to rezone five parcels from AR and LC to CC. Staff is recommending a rezoning to LC, which we'll get into later. Property is located at the corner of Rayford Road and Ferndale Drive, various addresses for a total of 4.4 acres, and this is in District 7. As you can see here, the properties are located at the corner of Rayford and Ferndale, which is directly across the street from the Lowe's and Walmart out towards Good Middling Drive. I'm sure many of you are familiar with that. There's also the Holly Chase subdivision to the north. And then to the west, you'll see the intersection with Clifdale Road. As you can see here, there is one property at 7818 Rayford Road. It's currently already zoned LC. This rezoning took place in 2021. The remaining parcels are zoned agricultural residential. And there is agricultural residential as well as SF10 to the north. To the south, where Lowe's is, is all CC. Future Land Use Plan is calling for this area to develop as a community center, which calls for large commercial developments with single-family residential on the edges. And the Future Land Use Plan calls for the area to the north to develop as medium-density residential. Subject properties are all primarily vacant at this time, except for... except for 7818 Rayford Road. There is one single-family house on that property. Again, to the north, you have the Holly Chase subdivision. To the west, at the intersection with Clifdale Road, is a Rite Aid and a bank. To the east is a church, and just past that, a medical office. And to the south, the large commercial corridor with Lowe's and Walmart. Here we have a table showing a comparison of the limited commercial district versus the community commercial district. The column on the left shows uses that are permitted only in LC, but not in CC, and then the opposite on the other side. Uses permitted in CC, but not those in LC. As you can see, LC, which is what staff is recommending, is a less intense commercial, commercial district. As previously stated, 7818 was rezoned in 2021 to the LC district recommended by staff. This, the subject properties are immediately adjacent to existing LC properties. They're at the corner of Rayford and Clifdale. The applicant is amenable to this recommendation of an LC zoning district, and a limited commercial zoning district is in keeping with the future land use plan as well as the existing commercial zoning district at the corner. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning to a more restrictive LC zoning district based on the future land use plan recommending community commercial, which does call for commercial development. The permitted uses, the uses permitted by the proposed change in zoning are appropriate for that area within that LC zoning district, and there are no other factors that substantially affect public health, safety, and welfare. And staff asks that you hold any questions until after the legislative hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. So with that, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Now, we just have one speaker for this item, Mr. Joseph Gillis.
Good evening, sir. I'm Joseph Gillis. I live at 9010 Stony Point Road. And I'm requesting this rezoning, and I am amenable to what the staff has recommended. It would certainly be conducive to anything that we'd want to put there. If you got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Other than that, that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis.
We have no further speakers.
All right. So with that, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions for staff or Mr. Gillis? Okay, Councilwoman McNair? All right, any other comments, question? Speaking to you, Mike. So it's motion by Councilmember McNair to approve Item 9.01, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion on the motion?
Are we approving the CC or LC?
The LC. Recommend it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, those in favor, show of hands. Counsel? And Councilmember Ingram?
Abbottson.
Oh, well, you know, it's so inconsistent. All right, all right, let's go hands real quick. Councilmember Ingram? All right, great. All right. Motion carries. Item 9.02. How you doing, Ms. Kitch?
The city received a deposit and a petition to close an unopened portion of Butler Street that is off of Robinson Street. The petitioner owns both sides, on either side of that unopened portion of that street. North Carolina general statute requires that we follow a certain procedure to close a street, which we have done. On September 28th, council set this public hearing. We have published in the paper for four consecutive weeks this notice. We posted the property, the physical property, so anyone could see, and we mailed certified letters to the adjoining property owners, which in this case was the petitioner. We also contacted the police, fire, EMS to make sure the closure would not impact them in any way, and city staff did a traffic analysis to make sure that closing this street, that it would not affect any future traffic concern, or have any traffic concerns, which it did not. We also contacted the utility companies, and there will be an easement reserved for PWC along this portion. They were the only utility company that did contact us back and say that they had utilities in the area that they would like to reserve. Are there any questions?
Do we need to have a public hearing? Is that, okay. So the motion would be to have a public hearing, to bring this to a public hearing?
This is the public hearing.
This, okay. So we need to have a public hearing now? All right, open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
Mayor Pro Tim, we have no speakers for this item.
Thank you, ma'am. Close the public hearing. All right. Do we have Mr. Hondros, Councilman?
I move to adopt the resolution and order the closing of the unopened portion of Butler Street.
There's a motion by Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Now, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Do you want to try it, Mr. Hare? If you'll try your iPads. Councilmember Ingram, your pleasure on this vote.
This is just a public hearing, correct?
No, ma'am. We just had the public hearing. This is to close the portion of Butler Street. And your vote?
Green.
Thank you, ma'am. Your vote's green, Ms. Hare?
So the iPads work for Mayor Pro Tim, huh? Might be in the user, right? All right. So motion carries unanimous, moving to Item 9.03. Good evening, sir. Did you actually come up here with that Pittsburgh still?
You know there's no shame, sir. You know. You know I am not afraid.
I'm gonna try not to let that affect my vote.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Counsel, we are back. We're back again to discuss and highlight service limit changes for the solid waste ordinance. We came to you in December and showed you many different requests and recommendations that we're requesting to do so that we can become more consistent and we can become more in line with our peers. So what we did was, we updated definitions. We corrected the ambiguity, and we updated operational language. So this is the meat and potatoes of it, of the service limits that we are recommending. The first part is for household carts. Right now, there are no limits in the ordinance, and we want to create limits for collection of household carts, household trash. That would be two, either two green carts. That'd be a green cart and a brown cart. That can be two brown carts. But either way, it's only two, two, two carts at a house for household trash. That way, we can have a standard, and we can start from there to see if, okay, if this is what we want to do, or if we need to make some adjustments. But right now, we don't have any standards whatsoever. For recycling, there's nothing in the ordinance right now about recycling. So we created language, and we're requesting for one cart for recycling. Same thing for yard waste. There's nothing in there about yard waste. So what we're requesting is, we have many ways that residents can do yard waste. They can do it by the yard waste carts. They can do it by the garbage carts. They can do it by regular container, 35-gallon with a lid. They can do it by bundles, and they can also do it by plastic bags. So what we're asking is that a combination of those, that there be a minimum of, or a maximum of 10 per household that we will collect. So if we could collect 10 of them, then we go to the next house. We are coming back the next week. We're coming back the next week. And hopefully, depending on how many they have, we will collect the rest then. And then for limbs, the current ordinance states that we collect 20 cubic yards, which is a lot of material. It's basically half of our trucks for the knucklebooms. So we're requesting that we limit that to approximately 10 cubic yards per truck, or per house, excuse me. And then for private streets, there's nothing in the ordinance that regulates private streets. Right now, we go down any private street or long driveway, and it can be, it can be potholes, craters. It can be overgrown with foliage, and we're still required to collect it, which gives damage to the trucks and could potentially hurt one of our employees. So we're asking that, one of the things that we're asking for private streets is to be able to determine where those carts go so that they can be placed in a place where we can get to them without having to damage our equipment that we're paying $200-some thousand to $300-some thousand for, and it, just so we can have a better determination. Also, for private streets, we're asking that for regular roads that are paved, there's nothing wrong with them, but there's still a private street that we're asking that there be a waiver so that there's, nobody can come after the city and say, "Well, you damaged our road." Well, it's a private street. Technically, in other municipalities, like I said before, the solid waste wouldn't even go down a private street if it, if it wasn't accepted by the city. So those are the meat and potato things that we're talking about and that we're, the big items that we've changed in the ordinance that we're asking for permission to move forward with that in the ordinance. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Let me, let me, Madam Clerk, we have any speakers?
Sir, we do not.
All right, so let me open and close the public hearing. And I did have, did have a question. I'll go to...
Oh, Thompson.
All right. So I will go to Thompson. Mayor Pro Tim and I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. I have pretty much failed in not relaying all the questions I have with staff to the rest of council, because I don't want it to be a repeat of the questions that we have. So per the conversation that we had earlier, could you please send what is considered recyclable and not recyclable to all the staff so they can put it out to all their constituents in all their districts? So maybe they can use just the one cart and not need an additional one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Thompson. Mayor Pro Tim, Doc?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we met, I don't recall us discussing private streets and the amount of damage our trucks are sustaining. I'm not prepared to vote on any changes to private streets without more information. That's number one. Number two, I want us to be able to have two green carts and two blue carts, because it's just my wife and I, and we fill up our, our blue cart, and then I'll take my other stuff to my office. So, Councilman Hare has a question.
And Mayor Pro Tim, if we can take the first one about the private streets. Today, we received some calls from people who live on well-maintained, built-to-standard private streets. That is not specifically what this ordinance is dealing with. What we're talking about are goat carts. I mean, so it's basically goat paths where the road is unpaved, has potholes, and literally, as we're driving along, we're doing damage to the road and doing damage to our trucks. But what the ordinance would seek to do is that, in all of those situations, we would be able to give the solid waste director and, I guess, staff the ability to work with the residents on that area, in that area, to find an appropriate place to put their carts. Some members of council have been on here for some time, even though out west, for well-maintained roads, we received complaints that our trash trucks were doing damage to private roads, and we had to come up with solutions there as well. And as a matter of fact, I think, Councilman Thompson, we've had some conversations about a road in your subdivision as well. But Daniel, I think that I'm correct in stating that. And so this is not all the private roads that are well-maintained. This is the ones which are, again, not safe for vehicular traffic. Is that correct, Daniel?
Yes, sir. You are 100% correct.
So if, if the motion were to say substandard private streets or dirt roads?
Well, I would, I would say that again, hearing it from me, hearing it from Daniel, I would appreciate council giving us the leeway for all of those to work with them, but primarily, it is for those, for those. But, so we didn't have to bring stuff back to council on, on every occasion. We received calls today from people who live in very well-maintained private streets, and we have no reason not to continue to service them because it creates more work for us. So that's just one. Number two, as it relates to the number of blue carts, I think that that is more a reflection of the contract we have with our solid, of our recycling hauler, not necessarily a desire. But again, Daniel, if you could address that component.
Yes, sir. That's part of the contract that we have with Waste Management that is, we're charged for one cart per house. And we had this discussion when we went to biweekly collections about those residents that had previously purchased carts before. Now, those residents that had previously purchased carts before, and it's approximately about 4,000 or so, we have not had an issue with Waste Management on those residents. It's only right now that if there's a resident that only has a 96-gallon cart, they cannot purchase another cart, because that's not in the contract. So we would have to pay more to get more.
Well, I think residents are willing to do that. I guess my concern is changing this now, or changing it before we really notify folks. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with that. And plus, I want to encourage as much recycling as we possibly can. Okay, so, so you're looking for a direction from council, a motion. Is that correct? Guidance? Okay, okay. All right, thank you. I'll, I'll come back in round two. Thank you.
So, Ms. Edwards, before I go to Councilwoman Hare, a couple of questions I had. One, I'm kind of, if I recall correct, was there a rebate that we get from the recycling dollars? It used to be like 11%.
And while they're waiting on that, Mayor, I think one of the things that Councilman Thompson talked about as well is when you look at a list of what is actually recyclable, and is, and that is, that goes through our third party that they can actually recycle and doesn't cost us money to process, that list is not probably as great as people think. There was a time when we first started, and again, Mr. Hare, I think you recall, there was a big thing about us taking green glass. And we had to stop doing that green and colored glass and other things. But did you hear the, catch the mayor's question?
I did not.
Yeah. So before, there was a rebate that we got with the recycle vendor based on the amount that we turned in. It used to equate around 10, 11%. Is that still in effect?
Not with this contract, because we, we're still with Waste Management. The original contract for that rebate was with Waste Management and Pratt. And then we received from that, because that's where we took the recycling. The new contract, because Pratt and Waste Management didn't want to have the contract with each other anymore, we had to get our separate, a separate contract with a different vendor. And so we have that contract, which we had a tipping fee of approximately $45, which is way low. So we did not do the rebate based off the fact that we were getting a substantial, 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 substantial reduced rate for this service. The Pratt, Pratt had came back when we were negotiating, trying to get the contract with them at a, at a rate that we could not afford. trying to get the contract with them at a rate that we could not afford. And so we had to go in another direction. So part of that negotiation was to come up with a cost that was, that we could afford, that wouldn't put us over a limit that we would have to come back, because we couldn't get a user fee adjustment just for this.
All right, so I hear you correct, or I understand it correct, is basically you negotiated for a better rate, which did away with the rebate.
Fixed, a fixed rate.
But the larger cans certainly encourage more recycling, and I understand that the list of approved items is probably dwindling by the year, I guess. But my question was that, as I look at the peer city comparisons, can you pull that up on your presentation? All right, so the other page with, page one or two, yeah. So as we, as we look at limbs or bulky, so Fayetteville is the only one that you have to call in and schedule the bulky, right?
No, this was, when we first did this, that was the case. But remember, since then, we've gone to every other week for bulky and limbs.
Okay.
So we're...
So we're reducing the quantity on the, and same thing on the limb. So you're every other week, so this needs, this is not correct, right?
Well, just those two right there.
Okay. And so you're reducing the amount that you take, but the frequency increased? So you don't have to call, it'll come by automatically?
If it's, if it's that, if it's that amount, we're just going to pick it up. Just going to pick it up.
Okay, that was my question. All right, Councilmember Harris, and then Hondros.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes, sir. Why are you smiling, sir?
Because this is one of my items as it is for all council. But there's been great improvement since the last time you were here. And I do appreciate that. But one thing that I just want to give a thumbs up on, because I personally would not be a part of trying to force a property owner to deal with their gravel street or road. I think their residents or their tenants could, can do that if they want to keep them. But to move it to, and if I'm understanding correctly, it's to move, you're going to be speaking with them that we pick up, to move their, our cans to a safer location where our trucks can pick them up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I like that. I think that's much better than trying to put an expense, maybe, maybe when they're not really ready to do the expense. But I do understand. I mean, we want it better. But I like that better than trying to use a forceful hand on the property owner. So thumbs up on that one. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to ask Mr. Edwards if he could put the peer city comparison on the screen for the viewing audience.
On the wrong way.
I think it's a separate, it's just a little, there you go. So the packet we have has actually two pages. There's the comparison of frequency, and then you got a quantity one, too, yeah. So the audience can see that. I think we exceed all of our peer cities by a long shot, so just for comparison. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember McNair.
Oh, yes, sir. How you doing, sir?
How you doing, ma'am?
I want to talk about the recycling items.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a message to our citizens about clean, I guess rinsing our bottles out from residue or...
That's one of the, that's one of the things that we've always asked residents to do when it comes to recycling, spaghetti jars, cans, you know, whatever it is. You know, rinse them out before you put them in the recycle bin or the recycle cart. No styrofoam, you know, no popcorn things, you know, from packages and stuff like that.
What happens if they're not rinsed properly?
Well, it's just part of the contamination. And if we get enough contamination, then we'll get a cost for that. It's hard to quantify, because it's based off the amount of contamination. We might have to go pick up a whole load. We've had to do that. You know, there was just too much contamination in this load based off bags. I mean, we've gone to Sunoco and seen Waste Management bringing recycling and unloaded there, and there was all kinds of stuff in there. I mean, fire, not fire hoses, but garden hoses, bags. There's not supposed to be plastic bags in recycle carts. So a lot of residents feel like they're doing us a favor by putting their bottles and cans in a plastic bag and then putting it in the recycle bin. Don't look down. But that's not how it's supposed to be. You know, you're just supposed to put it in there free without any bags. Really, those plastic bags, you would be shocked at the damage they do to a, the machines that these recycling go to. And it just messes them up and stops the machine from being able to function. So there's a lot of different things that, about recycling that we even put out over the holidays, what to put in the recycle bin and what not to put in the recycle bin, referring to Christmas items, like Christmas paper is not recyclable, and all that other, you know, some of the other things are not recyclable, so.
Well, thank you for that. The reason why I asked is because I didn't know these things until I watched a documentary on TV about rinsing out the items.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm quite sure there's a few people that don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman McNair. Councilmember Banks McGlothlin.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, if we vote on this, well, I'm sure we're going to vote on this tonight. If this is approved, when are we expecting this to go into effect? And then, two, how soon will we push this information out to the public? And also, would you need to come back to council for approval for that?
So, first thing is, you know, we would go through it, make sure we clean up, make sure all the ambiguities out of it, make sure we dot our I's and cross our T's, make sure everything is straight, make sure the information is in there the way it's supposed to. You know, make sure the city attorneys go through it. Then we do an education phase, and Mr. Lawrence, I'm not sure if he's here. But Lauren, you know, we've already discussed with Markham, you know, that we will have to do an education phase. Also, we'll have literature, we'll have, you know, all kinds of different things that we would do to try to get the message out to the residents, including going to talk with them if need be. But I'm, and this is just me, we haven't really discussed the drop dead date, but it could be, it could be the new fiscal year, you know, July one, starting, you know, this is what, this is the way we want you to do it. Or we could make it December, just to make sure that the residents get enough time to get educated, and we get everybody on the same page of what we're expecting. We have, we do have a plan, you know, of how we want to do it. And so we, we're definitely not just throwing this out there.
And Mayor, if there's not any further questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, I think Mayor Protimin had...
Okay.
But certainly, you can be a great second if you choose. All right.
If I could just respond to this, Ms. McGlothlin. Our intent would be to move sooner, but have a period where we would educate and help people come into compliance. It's really not about punishment at all. It's not what we want. We want people to understand the rules. And there's a lot of efforts going on right now to really help the citizens understand the rules. And what we, what we've found is, once people know, they're pretty, they're very, very compliant, self-compliant even. So it's a matter of educating, and when there's some violations, we'll help them. When there's multiple violations, we'll go through those.
I was going to say, definitely the education piece, because I'm guilty for the plastic bags.
All right, Mayor Protimin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple more questions, Mr. Edwards. I want to echo what Councilmember Harris said about the improvements. I'm seeing the knuckle trucks out there, and I'm seeing a lot of stuff getting picked up. I appreciate that. Our, for eight, excuse me, twenty, golly, twenty years when I first got elected, the saying was, "Just pick it up. If we can get it in that container, just pick it up." So, all right, and now, one question about, I noticed we have some smaller trucks, because we have some small private streets we use a smaller truck on that does not have the mechanism, the arm, I guess.
Yes, sir.
And so we'll continue doing that, correct, as long as it's an improved private street?
If we, if we can get down the street, but safely...
You're going to pick it up.
We're going to pick it up.
All right, thank you. I support you on that. And then lastly, my suggestion was, because I'm not going to support just forcing people to have one blue can. I would rather we charge a little more. I think when you've got four thousand, you've got, what, seven or eight percent? We have sixty-one thousand residents, so we got four thousand, that's seven percent, six and a half percent.
Sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five.
Oh, wow. I did not realize that. We had gotten above sixty-one, sixty-three. Excellent.
Yes, sir.
So my point is that I think a lot of folks that want that second blue can have probably already got it. So I would rather us not just say, "We're not going to let anybody else have a second blue can." I don't want to do anything to discourage recycling. And I want to continue the education phase that you all were talking about, or Assistant City Manager Lindsay was talking about. So I am prepared to make a motion, but if Councilmember Banks McGlothlin would prefer, I can defer. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Mayor.
So, before I go to Councilmember Banks McGlothlin, I'm unclear, are we going to amend the recommendation to make room for the additional recycling? I do see that we're kind of the only one that have any language about it.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think the issue, again, is not staff or the city's willingness. It is a contractual arrangement we have with Waste Management.
Right.
So if council is interested in us doing something extra beyond what the current conditions we would have to be, so we could, if council is so inclined, could pass tonight, and we could come back to see if Waste Management or someone else would have some appetite to amend the contract on a case-by-case basis as a rider for a house. But with the number of households that Mr. Edwards talked about, it is going to be, could be very hard to kind of track that mechanism separately. One of the things that we've not talked about are for hyper-recyclers, all their community alternatives. If they were so inclined to drop off recycling, I'm not aware of, we used to have those at some of our rec centers.
But they can still go to Ann Street and bring recycling also.
That was the impediment there, Mayor and council.
So it's not the sort of container they would pay for, like these other places you pay for, it's the servicing of the second container that you're saying that they're not doing, with the exception of those that already had it?
Yes.
And do you know what percentage of the sixty-three thousand that was?
It's about four thousand residents that prior...
Okay, all right. Councilmember Banks McGlothlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to accept the recommendation on a proposed ordinance revisions for operations.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Banks McGlothlin, and second about Councilmember Hondros, discussion on the motion. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Hold the iPads up. All right. It is working for this user. All right, those in favor. All right. Okay, motion carries. Those voting in opposition, Mayor. All right, moving on to item ten point oh, evidentiary hearing. So many scripts over here, Madam Attorney. All right. We're going, we're prepared to hold the hearings where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak at the hearing would have signed up to speak, city clerk, by name and address. We begin, we will begin with staff presentation, and then moving to the formal hearing. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those who oppose the item. Related to the hearing, individual speakers are limited to three minutes, unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. City clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Clearly state your name and address, may then begin to address the council. At thirty seconds, you will hear a warning. At the conclusion of your allotted time, you will be notified. So at the time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Harmon.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First case we have before you is special use permit twenty-three oh one. This is a property located on Bragg Boulevard, nine twenty-nine Bragg. It's a little over an acre in size. And the request tonight is to allow a religious institution within five hundred feet of adult entertainment. Just to give you an idea of where the property is located, this is the old Stewart Automotive. There's a different automotive company kind of in the front of the building. There is a church that is looking to rent out part of the space in the back for their ministry. They will not be subdividing the property or anything like that. It's just, they'll be using part of that building for their services. Across the street here, kind of catty-cornered, is Secrets. That's the adult entertainment place that is making the church come before you tonight. Being that, well, this is Washington Drive here, Murchison Road, the MLK Freeway here, so that kind of gives you an idea just off of the downtown. It is currently zoned CC, your community commercial, our heaviest commercial district. Our land use plan calls for this to be a redevelopment area of commercial activity. Just a few photos of the property itself. This is the area that the church is looking to utilize, is back here in the back. Just a few photos from around the property. To the south is some residential development. Other than that, everything around this property is commercial and has been for many years along Bragg Boulevard. Again, religious institutions are allowed by right in the CC district. However, when they're within five hundred feet of either a bar, nightclub, or adult entertainment, they are right now required to come in and get a special use permit. I will put a little plug in that in our spring text amendment, stuff that we'll be bringing to you here in the next couple of months, this is actually an amendment that we're looking to do, is to take churches out of that, because I don't see any reason why churches should be punished where they locate, instead of... It makes sense for the bars and nightclubs to not be able to locate near churches, schools, daycares, but why a church can't just locate wherever they want to without spending money to come before you to get permission? Doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But that's where we are tonight, because that's where we are with our ordinance currently. In August of twenty-twenty-one, just a little over a year ago, we had a similar case on the same side of Bragg Boulevard, within the nine hundred block of Bragg, where another church came before you and was approved for a special use permit to locate within five hundred feet of Secrets as well. And this property is approximately two hundred and ninety feet from this adult entertainment. However, there is the, I guess, six lanes of Bragg Boulevard that separates the two uses. Of course, this is an evidentiary hearing, and you have your findings. And if you have any questions of staff, if you would please hold them until after you've conducted your hearing, we would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So with that, I open the evidentiary hearing. I asked the applicant, as you come to make your presentation, for the record, again, please state your name and address. Please provide your testimony. If you're offering expert testimony by you or one of your witnesses, please share with council supporting information to qualify the individual's expertise in said matter. Have a listen to the applicant's testimony. Madam Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Yes, sir. We need to swear in the speakers for this item. So I have Ms. Stephanie Davis, Mr. Sammy Davis, and Mr. Peter Stewart. If you would, please. Yeah, if you could all just come here. And if you would raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thanks. And our first speaker will be Mr. Steph, uh, Ms. Stephanie Davis.
Good evening, everyone.
My name is Stephanie Davis. I currently live at 4,004 Trista Lane in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Recently relocated to Fayetteville area, and we're just excited to open up a ministry at 929 Bragg Street.
My name is Sammy Davis. Mayor, council, it is a pleasure to stand before you. Our desire is to build community through faith, hope, and love, that is our theme. 2023, we believe that this will be a year of thriving. Excuse me. This would be a year of thriving. We said that we will focus on God's promises and celebrate wins, no matter how big or small it is. So, we are hoping, our prayers are, that the council will grant our request so that we could really impact Fayetteville State University. We're going for that one, just by mentorship and being, we've already been out there for a good visit, had a great time with some of the students, and, you know, we just want to be a part of the community in a positive way. So, thank you.
Thank you all, welcome.
And our next speaker is Mr. Peter Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, good evening.
Good evening. Peter Stewart, 125 Dundee Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I'm partial owner of the property and manager of the property for the family. And we have some empty space that needs to be filled, and I can't think of anybody better to fill it than these people right here to bring God's word to our community, and I hope you will support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
And we have no further speakers, sir.
All right, council, any councilmembers have questions, comments, or?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the years, it had been concerns from some members of the community of putting the church and daycare centers and schools, and I could be missing one, so close within this zone. And if I'm not mistaken, the zone, I'm thinking the zone ordinance probably has changed that we're at 500 feet, because I remember it being more distance than it is here, because I've had these issues that have fallen within the district before. So, I do have a lot of concern about that. If Mr. Harmon would come back up, Mr. Harmon, this, this item, you spoke that the amendment or the text amendment is going to be an item that's going to be coming back to us, where you're trying to do some changing with it. So, if that is the case, you're saying then you want, there's a possibility of just making a change where religious institutions, are you, are you meaning all the others that I just mentioned also? Or are you just meaning religious institutions for that new amendment that you all are working on?
Just right now, it would be religious institutions would be able to locate just by right closer. Now, going the reverse way, you are correct, it is a longer distance for the nightclub to be able to, to, if a new nightclub or adult, if adult entertainment were trying to locate there now, for them, it would actually be a thousand feet to the church if the church was already there. So, there's a bigger spread already for them.
Okay, so if the church or if a petitioner wanted to do this like it is tonight, you saying that is different versus a nightclub, a strip club, liquor store, whatever, trying to move within that?
If, are we talking about the case tonight, or are we talking about the proposed option?
Talking about, well, it's all in the same thing, but yes, but okay, I got it, I understand.
And the only reason I bring that up, sir, is I think we have a.
We have one additional speaker.
At what, that we need to receive their testimony before we close the public hearing, and that may impact your decision, sir.
I'll stand down, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I need to swear in the speaker.
Okay.
Okay, good, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Wiggs. I live on Carolina Avenue directly behind the property. I own a small business in Fayetteville, I own Haymont BP up on top of Haymont Hill, so I understand the business side of it. I also own some rental property, so I understand Mr. Stewart's vision also, because I own rental property. The change in under variance, to me, will bring a different set of problems. How long before the religious institutions start to expand and encroach on our neighborhood right behind it? If you look at Snyder Memorial, Haymont United Methodist, Northwood Temple, et cetera, et cetera, you can look all over Fayetteville, you see where these churches have come into our neighborhoods, and ten years from now, they bought that lot, that lot, that lot, and the next thing you know, they're in my backyard, my front yard, trying to get my property. I just, I don't think that's right. Second port, the businesses that is there was there legally. Now, you're forcing on him with the variance change that, oh, we can't do this now. You wouldn't do the same thing if you let the church, which I think is where Mr. Harry was headed. The church can't, I mean, he couldn't move in, I have, okay, okay. But the strip club, which I don't visit, I don't profess for them, but he is, they are a small business. They're there legally, they got their permits and everything to be there. You wouldn't let them move up on the church, as you said, the city ordinance is a thousand feet. 500 feet gives them a buffer for an existing business. To me, you're throwing gasoline on a fire, because sooner or later, this has become an issue with that business that has bought that property, owns that property, that now they're going to be forced to do other things. The encroachment is an issue. The residential area directly behind this property is narrow streets. People have to park on the street on a lot of these houses. We're going to get more traffic down there coming in from it, and that, to me, creates an issue. And like I said, the question that would be asked by me would be, are you going to allow the strip clubs to move closer to the church? You wouldn't want one to build right next door to your church, or within 500 feet of your church. Obviously, we've got an ordinance for a thousand feet. Like I said, I don't profess what they do, I don't, but they are a small business. I do appreciate what they're trying to do with Fayetteville State. I'm a '93 alumni of Fayetteville State, proud to be there. And, but I don't think with my position, living right behind it, that this is a place to put this at the time and infringe on that business's rights. I had a small business, and sometimes it gets hairy with restrictions like that, and it created some problems for me on the hill. But I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. You had a rebuttal, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, just the fact that we have probably 100 empty car spaces right now. They'll be coming on Sunday where we're closed, and possibly Wednesday night. And they are starting a small church, and they would have to, the space I'm leasing them, they would never be able to put more than 50 people in there. So, there's no way in the world where they're going to be, they could expand and take other car parking places outside of my area.
Okay, all right. All right, Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right, council, any other questions before we close the hearing portion? All right, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harmon, can you come back up here again and explain to us the distance and go over it in layman's terms, so I can totally get a understanding of what you're saying?
Yeah, so, and the map that you have in front of you, I want to use that, because that's probably one of the best ways of looking at it. The yellow line out here is the new thousand-foot notification area where we send letters out. So, there you can kind of see what a thousand feet looks like. So, again, from the corner over here to Secrets is about 290 feet. When a church wants to locate, if a church, if it was, if Secrets were not there, the church could go in here without ever coming before you tonight. It's allowed by right, but because of Secrets being within 500 feet, they right now have to come before you to get a special permission with a special use permit to be able to do that. Does that clear?
Any other questions? Councilmember Benevente?
Mr. Harmon, this is also for you, sir. I'm looking at the eight findings that must be met here, and I believe that in the legislative text, you've done some of the work in defining a number of these, but are you letting applicants know that they might need to get an attorney even to make sure that they're meeting and complying with all eight of these things? Because I didn't hear much evidence this evening related to these eight specific things that they have to meet.
We do give them all of the findings. We tell them that they need to speak on those findings and present any evidence that they have related to those. The, inside your packet, the findings that are in, there's a set of findings in there with kind of answers to the findings. Those came from the applicant, not from staff. Those are straight from the applicant.
As well, as well as Councilmember Benevente, going back to your question, certainly, if you have some questions of the applicants in order to elicit that information, you, council can do that as well.
All right, council, any other comments, questions? All right, with that, I will close evidentiary hearing. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. I move to approve the special permit to allow a religious institution to reduce the required 500-feet distance separation between adult entertainment uses and bars, nightclubs, and religious institutions from 500 feet to 300 feet, as indicated by the applied site map, subject to all other conditions identified in and conforming to the current Unified Development Ordinance standards, as represented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing, and that the application is consistent with applicable plans, because, one, the development is located in a community commercial zoning institution, and, two, that this use complies with the findings listed, and, three, the proposed permit is in the public interest, because the proposed S U P does not fit with the character of the area. If approved, the special use permit shall become effective upon this approval of the Order of Findings of that by the council. The S U P shall expire one year from its effective date if a building permit is not issued within that time.
I second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve based on the conditions mentioned, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, try the iPads.
Just a very brief discussion. I think it's important that we, you know, two-way streets, right? I mean, if there is a club that wants to move closer to some religious institutions, that we should keep this vote in mind.
Well, I think when that comes up, right now, it is equivalent for both, and I think that's a great conversation we look forward to have. All right, motion on the floor. Any questions pertaining to this motion? All right, council, look to you for your votes, those to approve, the motion is to approve. You see him? All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Agreed.
All right, motion carries. unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, moving to item 10.02. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next case we have before you is another special use permit, S U P 2302. This is property trying to go to a two-to-four family dwelling, and actually a triplex in a single-family six zoning district. Property is located here along Post Avenue. We have Ramsey Street out here. This is Hudson Bay Seafood and the post office right here. So, that kind of gives you an idea of where we're looking at in relation to this property. The development here is an older development. I believe most of the houses are kind of 1950s. It is currently zoned, single-family six, all the way around it except for there to the south, the limited commercial where the post office and, as it Hudson Bay, the ABC store, and we have a Family Dollar are all there. Our land use map calls for this property to be a medium-density residential with a higher density here behind it and more highway commercial over here where the commercial already is. Subject property, there was a residence on it at some point in time, but it is a vacant piece of property currently. It's just over a third of an acre. Surrounding it, you can kind of see the, all of the houses to the northeast and west are all kind of typically the same look and size. And then again, there's the post office just to the south. This is the, what the applicant is looking to do. They are trying to do a triplex, three units next to each other, one-drive entrance with parking for all three here in the front. They are, and we'll get into it in just a second, looking for some conditions to go along with this. And we'll look at that here in that with these triplex units, per the U D O, a triplex, once you go past a duplex, a triplex in the U D O requires you to have one entrance into the triplex building. So, you'd have like one front door, and when you go in, it splits into the different units. They are asking for a condition to allow them to have three different or single entrances into each unit. And then they also are asking for a reduction in their side yard setbacks to as small as 5.33 feet on one side, where 10 is typically required by the ordinance. If you noticed in the aerial photos, though, a lot of the houses having been built in the 1950s do not currently in that neighborhood conform to that 10-foot setback. And then, of course, you will have your findings for approval. Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions of staff, your council had asked that y'all hold those till after the evidentiary hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. With that, we will open up the evidentiary hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I need to swear in our two speakers for this item. That's Ms. Lori Epler and Mr. Ben Stout. He's not coming. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Epler.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I know I have 15 minutes, but I don't intend on taking 15 minutes, so.
Bless your heart.
That's the good news. As Mr. Harmon said, this proposed development meets all the requirements of this zoning except for, two, the fact that this property is zoned SF6, and prior to the U D O and the U D O zoning, this property would have been allowed to have three units on one lot. That was taken away from them unbeknownst to them with U D O zoning. The reduction in the side yard setbacks are on the site plan that we furnished you. Many of those houses in that neighborhood, as Mr. Harmon said, were built prior to zoning. Just realize that even though we're asking for a reduction in those side yard setbacks, we still will meet building code setbacks. we still will meet building code setbacks. So as far as fire prevention, things like that, as far as a safety factor goes, we'll still make sure that we meet those requirements. Um, again, we're asking for the condition that we only have one front entrance for these units. We would like to have three front entrances. Those are the conditions that we've asked for an exception to. Um, the proposed, as far as our findings of fact, Councilman Benevente, uh, the special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding lands and the uses permitted in the zoning district of surrounding lands and that the proposed use is compatible with the overall area as the surrounding area is zoned residential and is comprised of mainly single-family residential homes and small multifamily complexes. Uh, the residential use avoids significant adverse impact on the surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration. This project is a residential development in a, in a residential area. There will be no adverse impacts on adjoining parcels with regards to service delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration. The special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use on the adjacent lands. This project will be self-contained on one parcel and has sufficient on-site parking. There will only be one driveway so as to allow one car to enter the street at a time, preserving the safety aspect. All construction materials will be comparable to those of the surrounding homes. The owner anticipates no negative visual impacts on the neighboring properties. The special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources. This development is in a residential subdivision designed for and situated in an area that's not sensitive to natural resources. The special use maintains self-ingress and egress onto the site and safe road conditions around the site. This proposed use will be a well, in a well-established neighborhood with adequate roads. Project proposes only one driveway to maximize safe traffic movement to the same level as a single-family structure would. Special use allows for a protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. The neighboring lots are currently built upon and those structures were constructed in the 1950s. This development will not negatively affect those properties. This proposed development may actually increase the surrounding property values. Special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal regulations. And we will meet those regulations. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Epler. Um, council, any other questions, comments? All right, Madam, Madam Clerk, any other speakers? All right, with that, we will close the evidentiary hearing. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve the special use permit to allow two-to-four se- family, two-to-four family dwellings, one triplex, in a single-family residential F6 zoning district subject to the conditions identified in the submitted site plans and conforming to the current Unified Development Ordinance standards as depicted on the attached site plan as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing. And that the application is consistent with applicable plans because, one, the development is located in a single-family six, F6 zoning district. And two, that this use complies with the findings listed. And three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed S U P does fit with the character of the area. If approved, the special use permit shall become effective with, with the approval of the Order of Findings of Fact by the city council. The S U P shall expire one year from its effective date if a building permit is not issued within that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram, is the motion as stated, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Any discussion on the motion? If none, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, show of hands. iPad is sporadic, all right. Councilmember Ingram?
Agreed.
All right, unanimous, Madam Clerk, motion carries. Motion to adjourn? All right, y'all have a good evening.